All right, okay, it's March tenth, two thousand twenty-one, that's the J Township monthly meeting.
Reschedule monthly meeting.
Start with the public allegiance.
Aye, public allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Rockwell.
Jim Hattrick?
Here.
Frank Esselson?
Here.
Patrick Wachovich?
Here.
Lisa Bross?
Here.
Ryan Bloom is here, our S engineer, MSL. And Deb Antonio is excused.
Lisa, I hear her situation is doing better, so hopefully we can expect her better than that. Okay, visitors comment.
You've got all the, you received all those packets?
Yeah. So we have a letter from Jim Hop.
All right, I'm at least addressing the first part of that. Let's see, we got quite a bit here. Okay, um, in your September twenty nineteen accounts payable, item number thirty-three indicates that fifty-five hundred dollars was paid to Red Lion Municipal Authority. Information in your October third, twenty nineteen meeting minutes indicates that there were fifty-five hundred dollar payment for Red Lion. The municipal authority included payment for two different bids made by J Township Water Authority. One payment is in the amount of thirty-one hundred dollars for MXU radios and the other in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars for I Pearl meters. Quick background, at the time Joe Yuberg was on the board, he founded these meters on municipal bid. He told me about them. I also thought they were a good idea. It was under the spending threshold. I had reached out to, I think, a few other board members to get their thoughts. We made a bid, we ended up winning them. Shortly thereafter, tensions were stirring with the, with my previous employees. They didn't think it was a good idea. I was approached by Linda Quinn. I didn't approve these, they're not gonna work, et cetera, et cetera. So this is a follow-up to that, they're trying to catch me in failure of my past practices. So, um, how many MXU radios and meters were purchased? There were thirty-seven MXUs, twenty-one meters. Where do you intend to use those radios and meters and have they been installed? We plan to use them to make Gardner Hill to the county line all radio read, so Gardner Hill tank all the way to the southern part of the system at the interconnect. All meters have been installed except for one which is out for warranty replacement. The remaining MXUs will be used after more meters are purchased to complete the area. Okay. If the radios and meters have not been installed, is it true that they are being stored in a box in a garage owned by Patrick Wachovich's father? If that is not true, where are they currently being installed? They were stored at Patrick Wachovich's residence under the recommendation of the board at the time. They were returned to the water plant prior to installing the sys, installing them into the system. Are all of those MXU radios functional? Let me see, well, we got an A, now we got a B, okay. All of the MXUs and meters are functional, two meters have been returned to census for warranty. I mentioned that earlier, one is currently out, the other one remains in my father's basement. And just a side note, this is getting pretty personal, they, by mentioning my, where they were stored at my father's residence, my residence at the time, I think they're insinuating that I probably stole those meters.
Stole the meters, that's what you want, thirty-seven meters, right?
I don't know what I would do with them. If they want to continue insinuating that, they're more than welcome to call the Pennsylvania State Police or they can contact my attorney.
Yeah.
I'm done screwing around with this stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry to kind of not get professional here, but enough's enough.
Yeah, don't even worry about it. Okay, what I done there, oh, go ahead.
So, item number two is going to require some discussion with the board. In item number three, new business, in the agenda for your January seventh, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes is described as water for Peach Street addition. According to the discussion at your meeting, the residents at forty-five Peach Street will mostly, most likely be required to pay a separate tap fee and have a separate meter, and each meter requires a readiness to serve charge. If that is the case, then why is Lily's Auto Cafe a separate commercial be, building, not metered separate and required to pay a separate readiness to serve charge? Please explain how your decisions in those situations will treat all customers equally under your rules and regulations. This is something that's come up before, it's something worth discussing. We have some customers, I'm not saying, but it's not my decision to say Lily should be paying, but you have some places that they're paying readiness to serve for their house, but not their separate garage. This includes residences, not just commercial visits.
Yeah, 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 a lot of people have a garage.
Yeah, um, you have some places that have garages and separate residents and they pay two different fees, so it should be straight across the board. That's, like I said, it's be on me to make that decision, it's up to the board, but it's gonna keep coming up. I could, I said, at least at this point, I can go around and get a list of who's who and we can compare.
I think you better just put down who's a business and who ain't.
Right.
You always had the issue of somebody taking it to your garage, if you're a separate business, 'cause you've got one garage paying and one business not paying, so it is what it is.
Yeah, it should.
I'm not, I'm not saying, 'cause we brought this up before.
Yep, it should be, by all means, it should be.
And everybody always allowed somebody's personal garage.
Yeah.
Okay, but when you have a separate business, it's a business, and the problem is you already charge the other person that you know who I'm talking about.
And we, and we have some that are businesses that don't get charged, and we have some other businesses that do. So, one way or another, we need to make it standard.
Well, it'd be a good idea if you investigated that and say, now, your business, it's not your personal.
Car?
Car, hopefully or something. So, I would say, uh, if you had the time before the next meeting to go to each one and say, hey, listen, this is the way we're going to start looking at this. If not, we're just gonna be beat up with it all the time.
Yeah, I've mentioned before, it opens a can of worms, and I stand by that, you're gonna, you're gonna upset.
Well, I mean, you know, it's got the same, everything you said.
You're gonna upset, um, you're gonna, but it's.
But you don't wanna set up a lawsuit either, because you're charging one and not the other.
Right.
So.
That's the biggest thing, is to just show consistency.
Yes, so I, I think it's good if you, do take a look at that, if it's a personal, you know, even if it's the business, if it's one, it's one.
Yeah.
But if it's two, it's two, it's a separate building, it's a separate business.
Pretty simple.
It's pretty damn simple.
Now, that was part of the house.
That was the last part of the house.
And we don't wanna go down the road, and I'll say it, because the Bob Koppel's been on this issue for years, with the Storage Authority and everything. But you take, uh, like the barrooms and the motels, they are still one building. They pay the readiness to serve, they pay the, for the one building. Now, if they have something else on the side going on, then you got to charge them something different.
But you have, and a lot of it's interpretation, you have hotels, but you have some apartments, those are permanent facilities people are living in, so you can't say an apartment, hotel's an apartment.
And here's another thing, see, if you remember, up at the Big Trout, we got pulled into court, if you remember that, the storage did, because he was paying two fees. And nobody else was.
Right.
'Cause he was paying for the back room as a dance hall and the front room as a restaurant. And that, that ended up getting in court.
Yeah.
If you don't remember that, I do, 'cause I was there.
But it, and I, I think the rules and regulations say it is ultimately a discretion over the board, but it's an issue that keeps coming up, we should, so I'll make the list and.
Yep, make the list and we'll talk about it.
Make the list and we'll talk about it and we're, we're, we're set.
All right, then, the next is Christine Gavazic, correct?
Yes.
She seems to have some questions about, we were talking about someday in the future, maybe add an order, add an out that way.
Yeah, and you got tore up pretty bad about that, at the township meeting, I mean, they kinda laughed at it.
Boy, talk about something, they wanna hang you from the highest tree in the valley, huh?
And because of that, if you look at last month's agenda to this agenda, I, I mean, we've heard the agenda, or, did we, no, we don't, when we go to prove the agenda, I guess this will be my side note, um, I've made some little notes, uh, we were, there was a lot of discussions in township meeting about the main gate, I put in parentheses, slide gate quotes, equipment trailer, discussion, addition off of existing shop building, discussion.
Yeah, they act like we're going to buy it tomorrow.
Right, just 'cause you discuss something doesn't mean, put it, put it this way, they don't want us to discuss things behind closed doors with no quorum.
They don't want nobody to build nothing, they don't want nobody to build nothing.
So, just because we're discussing something doesn't mean we're necessarily doing it. That's the point of us meeting. By all means, hey, we wanna talk about stuff behind closed doors, they'll hang us, like, this is the proper way to do it.
No, but tree supervisors shouldn't run them on board down.
I agree.
And they run us down for over a half hour.
I agree.
And the part about, when they brought you up, was a whole different situation.
Yep, they, I guess in a nutshell, they were discussing things that I'm, that I'm responsible for in my job that I didn't do, and.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Good part is, I've got everything to back myself up.
It's just the same song, same song, same Tweety Bird.
So, I guess to touch more on Christine, we'll, we'll have to go more into when we make those discussions on business and everything, and, um, she mentioned, is it a space for public meetings, same thing, we'll discuss that more, but no, it's a storage area.
Storage, so we can fit both trucks in.
And a discussion.
And? We may have meetings there someday.
Maybe, I would say this side note, but.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
I, we, we can't, I know there's discussion of the merger, but that's indefinite, whether it's happening or not, or whether we want it or not. We need to plan for what's best for the authority. Now, we can't speculate on what may or may not happen, so continue business as, as we go, I'm thinking, like it's, so. So we'll, we'll cover more on that.
All right. So then that's about it then for.
Oh, you got Bob.
Huh?
Bob Koppel.
Bob Koppel? What do you have to say?
About meetings, or opening.
Yeah, the township has opened theirs, it's my understanding the sewer authority is opening theirs, um, I feel like, so our meetings are always the first ones, I feel like we're kind of getting thrown under the bus that, hey, they opened up, why didn't the water authority? Well, we have to have a meeting to discuss that, so it is our new business.
You know, and, and I mean, everybody has different opinions about this, but, you know, everybody wants to open up, but yet, I still watch the news every night, and I still see it's this county this much, this county that much, and, you know, and, uh, my theory is, is here's our county, until each county that's touching our county, until they have zero, I don't understand why, why we should have meetings open to the public, you know, I mean, now, my goal, and I've said this in months past meetings, to try to get opened up, like, the, the first month in June, you know, like, I don't know what that is, I think it's June third, or something of that nature, but, um, you know, and, and we had talked to, um, solicitor about this, and, um, he says, uh, you know, whether it's Tom Wolf or Wolf or whoever's, you know, opening everything up, you know, it's either open up or, or zoom, and, um.
We'll cover that too in their business.
Yeah, so.
So, one way or another, it's the board's decision to.
I think before the end of the night, we'll have a vote.
Absolutely, so it'll go to vote, whatever way it goes, it goes.
Not a one or two.
Yep. All right, and they were asking about meeting packets too, um, I believe Sharon had responded.
They asked about meeting packets and why I only advertised in the daily press for this meeting is, I was, I did this at home because I was told at the last minute that I had to, and you have to have two days to get it in paper. So I did it from home, I advertised in daily press.
Yep, you did good.
You emailed them and.
I emailed them the packet and I told them the meeting was being held here, I don't know what more they want me to do.
Once the meeting was canceled, I did remove the packet and put an announcement that the meeting was canceled.
Yeah.
We'll get into more details later on why the meeting was canceled, um, I knew the agenda was gonna change, so, once we made our changes, I was gonna upload it again, which I did this morning, and, and you, you want your board members to have their meeting packet before you release it to the public anyway, 'cause they might wanna make some additions or something.
Yeah, my meeting, when they ask for it, my board doesn't even have it yet.
None of the board members, so I, I can back you on that.
I don't think she should give them out after we have the meeting.
That's what I agree, but they shot me down, um, when I first started here, Fran.
Why's that?
Yeah, this was.
This was when I first started here, um, we never, when I, I did a lot of meetings, I was secretary for a lot of meetings, um, we never gave anything out until after the meeting, we, just the agenda, we never gave the minutes or treasurer's report or anything.
Well, I don't, I don't know why you, you're not obligate, obligated to give anything out.
We did it as a courtesy, the township strongly recommended with us, we kinda did that to show them, like, hey, we do listen to your opinion, we can't, we are coming back with what they.
That's okay, I mean, my opinion is, till after the meeting, 'cause we don't know what we're gonna change, say you do, uh, so no, we should have a meeting back until we're done with this meeting.
That's why, that's why we have draft, draft, draft. My reports say all information subject to change.
So does my treasurer's report.
Your treasurer's report, so.
So I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, if, I don't have a problem doing that, but.
That I just don't like.
As long as we get them out the day of.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the important part, like I said, is, I would, I would be offended if Josh Mo off the street said, hey, what's this on your agenda, and I haven't even had my packet.
Well, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I don't, I don't, I don't believe we're giving them out until we, we're, until we have this meeting.
Absolutely.
And we'll give as many as we want, and you can have them.
And you said that's how the city, what, city of?
I checked with city of St. Mary's Fox Township, the county, I checked with everything, but I was shot down, so.
I mean, I, I, I say as the courtesy, continue doing it, but they gotta work with us too.
Yep, all right, let's move on. Okay, approve the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Hey, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty-one. I need a motion for that also.
Oh, no motion.
All right, and triple minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty-one, have a second?
I'll have a second.
All right, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, and motion carried. Okay, treasurer's report.
I can. On the balance in the checking account is of one thirty-one, twenty twenty-one was forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Total deposits was sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventeen cents, less the payables of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and eleven cents. The balance in the checking account is of two twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one is sixty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. In the savings account, the beginning balance was two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-three cents. The ending balance is of two twenty-eight was two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-four cents.
Wonderful. Okay, approve of the bills.
Um, the total accounts payable for the month of February was fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and eleven cents.
Wonderful.
I need a approval.
Now, the, the Eads group is, now, are we pretty much caught up to that part in force?
Yes, yeah, pretty much, they're still.
Is that, is that, I mean, now, I, I imagine you still got the trip crossing, or is that in?
That's, that's in there.
That's in there.
Yeah, we were, we were able to keep all that within the same budget of the project.
Oh, that's great, good. Okay, it's, it's pretty much kept up to, we're kept, kept up to you to date, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, we still have, um, a couple thousand in the budget for inspection of, like, paving, and then close out, um, substantial completion, that kinda stuff.
And that five thousand that we approved to give you for that extra work.
Yep, that's what I was gonna mention, we approved the extra.
All right, I just wanna know, you know, where we goes out.
We approved the extra four thousand, doesn't look like we're gonna use it.
No, we couldn't use it, we're into it a little bit, but.
Yeah, the last couple of weeks, we didn't have to have an inspector there.
That's great.
The entire time, I, I kept checking, I think it was pretty simple.
So we, we need, we need a motion to approve the bills, correct? So can I have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make the motion, baby.
Okay, I'll second it.
No, you can't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it, okay, you have to abstain from everything.
Uh, yes.
You approve everything but the Eads project.
I abstain from the Eads project. All in favor?
That kinda makes it complicated.
You can approve the Eads project, but he can't, you can prove every, you can prove.
Do we need separate motions?
Uh, probably would be easier that way, because you can't approve anything else, you can prove the Eads project, but, but that's the only way we can do it.
So we need to approve a motion. Okay, I'm, all right, I will make a motion to approve the, uh, treasurer, or the approval of the bills as far as number twelve, the Eads group.
No, twenty-six.
Okay, twenty-six, uh, the Eads group bill.
Why wouldn't you approve the Eads group bill?
I do, I do, I make the motion to approve the Eads group bill.
Please tell.
I might've worded wrong.
Yeah, you, it's your own, it's your own, but you don't prove themself.
Yep.
And can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, and then, all in favor?
Aye.
And then I abstain.
Okay, and then everybody makes the motion for, or you guys make the motion for everything but twenty-six.
Well, we can do that, under, Fanny made it and just put.
Well, we, we jumped out of line, so, Fred, go ahead and prove that.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, I approve the bill.
Approve the bill.
I approve the bill.
Lisa Bross?
Lisa, second, okay, all in favor? All opposed, okay, motion carried.
And I, I abstained in my peril.
Okay, correspondence. J Township Board of Supervisors, at the October twenty twenty workshop, it was proposed that the Water Authority Board and Sewer Authority Board members hold a workshop to discuss the information and opinions given at the October workshop. October nineteen has put a lot on hold with restrictions being lifted on social gatherings, we would like to consider setting a date to hold the workshop. The township garage is available to be used for the workshop, the social distancing must be, being a must, we would like to continue the process of discussion on the merger.
Did they mark, did they see, see, okay, they, there's no note that they carbon copied that to the sewage, I guess it addresses us both, so I'm assuming they both got a copy. When we had that workshop, that was my proposal, um, I said, we may not need to merge, if there's problems with us not getting along, then let's meet, get along. Sewer authority expect, expressed interest, I think our board expressed inch of interest, we have not heard a thing, I still stand with that, if they wanna meet and talk about some things.
If the sewer authority wants to talk about.
Yeah, if sewer wants to meet and talk about it and discuss options, I'm more than willing to do that, I haven't changed my mind on that, but to this day, we've heard nothing from them, so if I'm interested, we're interested, or, or if, if we're all still interested and they are, then let's hear it, but.
If I'm interested in talking them with, the two authorities getting along, not merging of any kind, because we, we know what's gonna happen after that.
Yeah.
And the grand pooh is gonna take over and that's gonna be the end of it all.
I'll be going to the Storage Authority meeting tomorrow night, and I will ask them if, if they wanna date or not.
Yeah, wanna get together, come on up, give us a call, and get us on up.
Well, I'll go to the meeting tomorrow night and I will ask them, say, we, do we wanna carry this on, or how do you feel about it?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause it sounds to me, 'cause like, it, they, there was only a couple that are in favor for the merger, so, you know, other than Jeremy Rippey and, and a couple of his buddies, them's the only ones in favor of any merger at all, so.
And I, and I just look at that as a last, the merger to me is an absolute last resort, if we can.
Now, when.
Get, get something to show, yeah, we can work together.
Yeah, we can, we all get together, both boards get together and talk about stuff and, hey, what can we do to help you, what can you do to help us, wonderful. We, yeah, we, we don't need to merge to do that, why can't just both authorities get along and help each other?
And I can't say.
Without making a township supervisor or manager of it all, 'cause you know that's what's gonna happen, it's as simple as that.
And I, and I.
And I'm sick of hearing about, so.
Most recently, there was, they needed the water reeds, they had trouble, um, and they actually went back to the old agreement and bought them from us, I don't know if that's from here on out, but, uh, Rich had reached out to me to get something in stone, that's fine, um, let's get that ball rolling, let's do it.
There you go.
I think it's, it's already done.
Yeah, it is, but, but we need to be on the same page as them, is, are they?
That's all right, we gotta sit down and talk about that.
Does it need to be changed, whatever, we, we should have a meeting with them, I'm with it, so, ball, like I said before, balls in their court, they're interested, get ahold of us.
Yeah.
Like I said, I will be there tomorrow night and I'll ask them if they wanna meet about merging the boards.
Yep.
Yep, very good. All right, okay.
They're mainly not so much merge the boards, but just.
Just talk about.
Business moving forward.
And that's it, that's it for correspondence?
No, um, I received a call from Houston Township, um, Patrick was here at the time and we both talked to their secretary, their board wants to meet with our board, just get the agreement for, that the two lawyers have not gotten together to do, we have a new solicitor, he's not aware of all the situation of Houston Township, but Zwick is their lawyer and he's been dragging their feet and they wanna get on with it and close this out.
Okay.
So, they wanna meet with our board to discuss that and then give it to the solicitors and put this down, what we want, put it in writing, then we can sign the agreement. So I need to get back to her, I told her I would talk to you guys tonight about it and get back to her. So, I don't know what is good for you guys when you wanna sit down.
For me, it would have to be a Friday, and, and I can't a hundred percent guarantee it could happen, but there's a very good chance that it will, but it would have to be later, you know.
But they, they, like, they wanted to meet Monday and I told them Mark Sherman doesn't come to Friday, so maybe we can get together with someone out, and, you know.
It may not even take long.
I'm good for, yeah, I'm good for this Friday.
This Friday?
Yeah, I mean, or, or next.
We have to.
Well, next Friday's out, I can't.
Now, see, now, see, what would happen with this, we would have to advertise it as a joint meeting, and it's as a workshop.
Yep.
So, that's what we would have to do.
All right, so it might not be another month or so, but at least we're.
They wanna see what, so if you can give me some dates that you could be around.
I'm good for any night, any evening.
With some evenings.
Any evening.
Wouldn't be in the evening.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever.
So, Jimmy, if you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna be working two hours away, I mean, no, only, only, I'm coming, at least on a weekend.
At least three of us can go, and we're, we can, we can almost call Jimmy and say, Jimmy's somewhere.
Yeah, I can do a phone thing, that's no big deal. Yep, yep, I can be on there by phone.
Because they said there might, 'cause one's a truck driver too, he might have to come in on a phone call to you.
That's fine, yeah.
So, I will tell them that we're interested and let's get some dates together and we can do phone calls.
Get this taken care of.
Okay.
All right, and, and so that's good for correspondence?
Yes, I think so.
All right, okay, delinquency.
Delinquencies, I send out eighty-four, five delinquencies.
Sometimes it's you. Okay, maintenance report.
Okay, seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty miles on the F two fifty, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five miles on the dump, F I fifty, um, six one calls, check facilities and buildings, cleaning up, tidying up the plant routine, plus those needed, installing the meters in scattered towns. Lots of those needed, installing meters in scattered town, haul some iron scrap, old brass meter bodies, et cetera. Uh, there's a list on the shop to be turned into the office when completed. Uh, visual drive-by leak check, um, added cold patch to sinking road crossings in force. Quick update on the zero read, no read meters, uh, there are still some need to be checked, some are in Burndale, they're gonna be held off on until uh, we go out and actually replace Burndale, no point in getting them out of place. That's it.
Wonderful. Operator's report.
Okay, uh, distribution flow, six million eight hundred forty thousand nine hundred thirty, water flow is six million nine hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred four. Most of that, six point five million gallons from the plant and almost a half million from the well. Uh, distribution is up a little bit, but it has decreased, um, we've, there's been some leaks on two fifty-five, oddly enough, in the same area. Um, on customer side, breaking a couple of those, one of those fixed, and then we found one, uh, we got called this weekend, actually, about one in a in a building, um, that froze, didn't leak, um, that has kinda brought things, I can't say close to normal yet, it's almost too soon to tell, but looking a lot better. Backwashed filter, completed daily lab, bacteria samples still at ready for samples to lab, my reports, um. But backwash filters, back flushed intakes, logged monthly data to Excel, filled chemical drums, mixed phosphate. Activate new scattered town meters onsite with Conhill, uh, construction for installation of the two inch from pine to the houses along two fifty-five and the two three-quarter service connections. Installation of stream crossing section and disconnect of transite from tie-in location. Uh, completed twenty nineteen water allocation permit compliance report, uh, current year schedule, right sample based on calendar. Yearly flow meter inspection and certification, um, we had to use chains to get the truck back from the well after the ice storm. So that was, that was the event. Set up the old plant computer for the office, switched the files and installed Microsoft Office, the building software, sensor software, et cetera. Replaced leaking chlorine pump tubing in the plant, it actually broke, it kinda leaked in a in a spot that's not common, so I contacted Blue Book regarding the leak. Uh, they sent us a replacement and I ordered some more, that's all I got.
Alrighty, okay, on to old business. Number one, CDBG grant for us, and then down below it has A, update, B, stream crossing.
Um, the main CDBG fourth project, all Continental still has to do is, um, yard restoration and final paving. They were in removing valve boxes, hydrants, um, they did that in middle of February. Um, stream crossing is complete, activated, um, the transite line, there were some areas that we did expose, it was a lot shallower than we put the new line. Absolutely no concrete encasing, uh, it didn't look like it was in horrible shape, but the transite line does not hold up well to digging around or anything like that, so. It it's a good thing we have the new line back in. It it was not a fun day, Continental had a lot of water to deal with, the stream bed itself, that river rocks probably three feet deep, it was really tough to attempt to coffer dam.
Yeah.
But it's it's installed online and now everything through there is new plastic.
And we were, as we was running down at the last township meeting. Uh, I I just wanna ask you, they said if we would've went out earlier and the board would've knew about that crossing earlier, they they claim uh, Jeremy claimed this, it would've been cheaper if we would've went out earlier. Do you, do you think so?
I mean, I don't, I don't really see how the bids would've come in cheaper, we had one that was fifty thousand, one that was twenty-five, I mean, I think other Continental gave us one of nineteen, while they still had all their equipment onsite and everything. Again, I mean, I I can't say with a guarantee whether if we bid, if we did the same thing two months from now, if it would be cheaper, or if we did it two months beforehand, whether it'd be cheaper. I mean, I don't ballpark.
I don't think it would've been by much, that's my opinion of that.
They also said, we paid way too much for only fifty feet of crossing. I'm, the number stands out to me when we did it, Josh told me it was a hundred three feet. So that's a little longer than fifty.
Well, when you got people talking about stuff they have no idea they're talking about.
And the thing is, I I, when I listen to the video, it's, I think they are confused. They are under the impression that if we would've put this in the plan from the beginning, the county was going to pay for it. It takes one phone call to Tracy Gerber, she told me and Brian multiple times, HUD will not touch stream crossings. We had to pay for that, no matter which way you skin the cat, so.
And with that being said, if if we couldn't get in the stream, the conservation district didn't want us within fifty feet on each side of the stream bed. And that's where that hundred and three feet comes from.
Yeah.
The fifty feet is most likely, we in, we've concrete encased at forty feet, so that's probably where that number is coming from.
Okay, another question was in Huffy's letter, then they they seemed to liked Huffy's letter as they were talking about us. But uh, they said we didn't go out for any board crossing.
Uh, we actually contacted, um, C and R Drilling, who did put in a bid for the project, they actually have never gotten back for it, back with us. I'd also reached out to Terra Works, who we've had do several directional drills, um, they never got back with us as well. I mean, we can contact as many contractors as we want, but even if we contract, contact ten contractors, if only one gets back to us, only one gets back to us, if it's.
Yeah, they they mentioned, uh, why didn't we contact local excavator, Dave Roman Excavating? I'm actually friends with his daughter, um, so to assume I did, I mean, they don't know that, but.
We did.
Yeah, your daughter, I I did, I asked her on Facebook if they'd be interested, she said absolutely. Um, we sent a copy of the plans over to them, they are very busy, they did not respond, he did end up falling off with me later on. I told him it was already awarded, he goes, no problem, very busy, and I have the email record to show it, so. I guess the part that frustrated me in the meeting was, they took Huff's letter and thought it was gold, but they've gotten two emails from me as operator at the plant, if you have any questions, reach out to us. They read that correspondence from, they said it was from me, I I would rather them say it was from me, it's the position I am down there, but. They they read Huff's letter and took it as gold, but they scoffed at mine, they laughed when I said, well, Patrick said, if you have any questions, let us know.
Yeah, give me a call.
Call us.
I think we covered that and we're up to go to the township meeting and ask why we was run down.
Yep.
Uh, I only have one more question, we went down and fixed a road, which I appreciate that, but now, uh, really, that wasn't our job. So are we, we need to be reimbursed for the people's time? I mean, they did give us the cold patch, am I correct?
They did give us the, yeah, they they did load a cold patch, uh, the guys used half of it, uh, the other half is in the dump truck to be dumped on on the area.
I'm just saying, I I think we ought to be reimbursed, cuz I mean, they're calling and hollering, so we go fix it.
Right.
But it's really not.
Yeah, it's.
Not our job.
It's a lot more convenient for us to go do it, cuz Continental's on other jobs.
And and that's fine.
And no offense, Continental will probably get done quicker, cuz we are not on those jobs, we can just, oh, the call came in, let's go. Um, I guess that's up to the board, we didn't, I mean, I can estimate the time, um.
I mean, we don't have to make a big deal out, but we should estimate some of our time back, because that is their job.
They have at least six hours into it, but.
So, I mean.
That's something we can reach out to, um, Matt Hahn about and just say, I mean, even if the board is welcome to it, we can even say something like, okay, you know what, hey, we will keep the extra cold patch that we have at the end of it as a reimbursement for it, or something along.
Anything that shows, because, yeah, anything that shows that we got kinda reimbursed for it, because that is actually their job. It's in the contract for them to repair and keep it up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't mind doing it, because they're not in this area right now, but just so he understands that when it's all said and done, you know what I mean, we're have to discuss it.
Yeah, I can reach out to Matt and I'll discuss that with him.
Sure, thank you.
Let me know if it, if if they're not happy with it, which, I mean, I think at this point, they're probably assuming we're doing it for nothing, but if they're not happy with it, then we just have to probably stop doing it, I guess, I don't know, that's up to the board, that's all.
Well, I mean, it's it's up to them, if they wanna give us, uh, reimburse us for them doing their job, that's okay, we will go, we we will take care of it. Cuz I'm sure we're gonna get phone call after phone call.
Yeah, I can see both sides for sure.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, okay, on to phosphate.
Still, everything going good with the phosphate, um, I did get some extra bottles, uh, we're hearing, we're waiting to get back from, I, well, we can do another round of wire copper sampling at some point, but, um, um, Brian had actually had the tanks open, um, and I think the that the phosphate's kinda, um, keeping the tanks in pretty decent shape too, um. Well, I was curious to see like of what a lot of the scaling on the tanks looked like, um, to me, it doesn't look too bad, so I think it's it's taking care of that too, but I, uh, uh, my big indicator is opening hydrants, in the past, in the summer, I opened a hydrant, I had to let it run for ten minutes plus, um, upwards of an hour to get it to clear, um, I opened one yesterday, not full bore, but I had it ripping pretty good to collect a bacteria sample. I had brown for maybe thirty seconds, which is just what's in the barrel, it cleared out, was crystal clear, I cut it back, took a sample from it and iron was good, manganese was good, um, little bit elevated manganese, that's typical from a hydrant, um. So as far as I can tell, right now, it's working good, it won't be dependent on, uh.
What kind of gear we have for it, if you have another drought.
Extra lead copper sampling and stuff, we'll tell them it's a little bit more.
Well, we've been talking to DEP, just seeing if there is a certain time that they prefer, or a certain source that they prefer us taking the lead and copper samples. That way, we're we're doing it as per they would like it as well.
That's good. Okay, job description.
Yes, on.
Table that.
No, we missed thirty.
Oh, Mr. Armstrong, oh, the main gate, new slider gate.
Um, I reached out to Kessler's again, they did us, they did return us, um, a quote, um, okay, so aluminum gate, uh, with no opener, five thousand six hundred forty-six dollars eighty-eight cents, add the opener, five thousand two hundred eighteen seventy-three. Uh, they also threw on a three, three-foot wide pedestrian gate, um, if you have an opener and the power goes out or something, you wanna be able to weigh it in, um. I don't think at this point a gate opener is fully necessary, um, if I'm gonna argue for anything, it's the slide gate, uh, right now, the gate is propped open with a broomstick.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um.
That slide gate would be nice.
I think so.
I think it's a lot easier to keep the snow out of the slide gate in the back than it is to keep the whole light.
It is, uh, after the ice storm, I was down there and I had the lift on the gate and reef on it, it was just.
It'd hurt.
Probably is, hinges are probably getting worn and shit.
They are, it's saggy, and I know the argument, oh, we're paying him, he can go and do it.
They said they were gonna spend ten to fifteen thousand dollars, that was the argument, so.
Yeah.
To me, it's, not only is it a huge inconvenience, it's a liability, it has hit the utility truck and, God forbid, it hits a salesman's truck, my vehicle, any of the Sharon's vehicle, she's down there quite a bit.
What do we gotta do to make that happen, do we, uh, make a motion on that?
If our, if, when our budget looks good, let's approve it for when, when her budget looks good or we have the extra cash to do it.
Okay, you're right, Patrick.
I mean, when she says that we're capable, uh, and our budget, you know, if we have the extra cash to do that.
We have, uh, I know she doesn't like getting anything, we have the savings money, uh, I can't say what we got from Houston, but we got some money from Houston, which in the grand scheme of things, my thought was that, what we recovered from Houston Township was, what we were fighting them for was the readiness of surfees. That goes back to your water plant, the system, your upkeep, I think that would be appropriate.
Well.
So what you're saying, the money is there?
I think so, but she makes the final call.
And I mean, we've we've been talking about this for a year, it seems like.
Well.
She makes the final financials.
We're gonna let her make that final decision when she thinks the cash is.
You said you make it right now, or do you wanna, you wanna wait till the next?
I wanna look at, I wanna look at the next meeting and.
Alright, yep.
That's fine.
And, uh, cuz I have that there of stream crossing to pay for.
Alright, so table to next meeting.
We'll probably do that, but let's wait till our financials or we get the stream crossing paid for and get it back on the road again.
Okay, job description. The quote is only for thirty or sixty days, but I doubt that price is gonna change very much.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, we should, but it's only a couple of weeks away, really, cuz our mar, our April meeting's coming up, so this is already, it's not even gonna be a month, so.
And that way, you can look at your finances, see where you're gonna take it from or whatever, you know, I don't wanna make nothing short.
After, yeah, after that check cleared for the crossing and stuff.
Then you can see where you're at.
Very clear enough.
Okay, job description.
Nothing new on that.
We have to work on that, we have to.
And the top fee is same thing.
Same workshop.
Okay, CDBG Burndale.
Still nothing, I spoke to Tracy maybe two, three weeks ago, uh, she said she'd reach out to us when the funds are there, but she's not sure what the holdup is, but nothing, nothing new.
Yeah, I I emailed her last week and she had no updates on that. Okay, number seven.
Uh, Colton Short application for water service, I think we quickly discussed, the line could handle it, um, I, that's on me, I still gotta reach out to get, uh, some, Sharon, I'll get with you sometime, we'll send a letter to the township, we need it in writing this time, what their, what their opinion is, so, um.
You mean, if you have to open, cut the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, equipment trailer, let's table that. Addition of existing office shop building, again, we'll table that as all it is is discussion anyway, so.
Exactly, and to, we mentioned quickly earlier. Uh, their thought is, we're building on to make a meeting space, we don't have to go there.
We don't have to build on that.
We don't have.
We already have a meeting space.
We have space, we have heated it now, boom.
Yep, the room would be heat, on the, on the side of the building, where the meetings were thirty years ago, come there again, I think, uh, this year for the secretary and judging by just rough estimates, looking out there, I think we can fit more visitors out there than the township can, so.
Oh, I know, yeah, absolutely.
It's.
Yeah.
Why, why, why?
We'll keep discussing it and then we be.
Yeah, why chase and move around?
Yeah, and if we decide to, uh, do it, yeah, that's what we'll do.
Yep.
Okay, how's the tailgate coming in?
Okay, um, he, Justin called around to some junk yards, it's kinda like finding a needle in a haystack, they're not really, there's not too many out there because of the type of tailgate they are, um, he talked to some local projects about getting it repaired, cost was three hundred to four hundred dollars. A brand new one's five hundred bucks, so.
Okay.
Do I find it feasible to have someone patching already or does they think probably not?
Who'd he talk to about patching?
Uh, I think McLean's.
Now, was that just McLean?
To my knowledge, yes, I don't know if he talked to Hardcore, I'm assuming Corey would probably work hard a bit too, but.
Um, take it, take it to, um, take it over to McGarmens and to Dinsmore Welding, and, you know, just get a couple of prices there, see what they say. And then we'll make a decision at the next meeting.
I looked at the tailgate, it is shot.
Yeah.
And it's a safety issue, because if they jump up on her, it's gonna bust off.
Okay, I mean, do you think it's something that can be repaired, or is it gonna new?
I'll tell you what, the whole bottom is is shot, where it hooks to the sides. You know, so, you know, you you might have, you probably have to take the truck over too and show them the sides, maybe the pins are shot too, you know, to hold it, but they jump up on that to get up into the truck and fall, it is really shot, I mean, I I looked at it.
Well, hey, go over, like you said, a new one's five hundred bucks, I mean, you ain't gonna hurt to go over and see them guys, I mean, don't make a special trip, one of the times that he was running for birth or something, just swing over there and see what they say.
I didn't think of that, but that's a good idea, even though you buy a new tailgate, if the ends are worn and you have nothing to hook your tailgate to, it's no good either.
Trust me, them guys can fix it, I mean, that's what they do every. Trust me, them guys can fix it, I mean, that's what they do every day of the week, I mean.
Okay, that's a good idea.
All right, on the new business, a digging bid.
We got one, if you wanna open it.
Gambino Contracting, twenty-two Kelly Street, Benitez, PA, one five eight two one. Uh, phone number, eight one four seven eight seven five nine four three, mini excavator with operator, seventy-five dollars an hour. Skid steer with operator, sixty-five an hour, man hours, twenty-eight dollars an hour. Any larger equipment, dump truck, or runners will be priced accordingly, seems to me, that's who we are now, right?
Yes, that's all we've got.
Yeah, I mean, I, it don't matter to me, guys, whatever you wanna do, whether you wanna, if you wanna advertise it again. And make the decision at the next meeting, or you just wanna go with them.
You already advertised it?
Already advertising, we're in the, to March now, and we have some digs that, small leaks that were suspen, like we saw some.
Well, I will tell you this, on the ball.
Yep.
When we call, we need them, make it clear, make it crystal clear.
Yep, we've got a maintenance guy and a part-time maintenance guy.
Yeah, yeah, don't need no help, just bring your machine and let's fix the water.
That's what we gotta do.
We should have enough extra help.
So we need, we, we need a motion to make that happen?
That's correct.
Okay, let's make a motion, uh, can I have a motion to, uh, put Ga, or, I guess. Uh, let Gambino Contracting remain as our digger for when we have water break or something else. Uh, can I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to, uh, award Gambino Excavating the digging bid.
Okay, you got a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed, okay, motion here. Okay, Leans On Properties.
I have, uh, a couple, uh, properties that the water has been shut off, and, um. And they owe us money that we're never getting, because we've been Sunday now, and I can put a judgment against the properties with our solicitor.
Okay.
And then we could, if they saw the property, we could get the money from.
There you go, good.
I need a motion so I can do that.
Okay, I need a motion to, uh, contact our attorney and, uh. And that, what, what, what would you just say?
How long is they, how long have they been?
Oh, there's some that's been here when I started.
Oh, yeah, that's too long.
I mean, the water's been shut off, I don't even know if they're there.
And I mean.
You know, I don't know.
Well, will the attorney get a hold of the district magistrate, or?
Well, the attorney will probably handle all this.
All right, okay, so we need a motion for the attorney to handle the, uh.
Overdue delinquent accounts.
Yeah, the overdue delinquent accounts, can I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for the attorney to go after the delinquent accounts.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
I also talked to the attorney, um, if I can shut off water yet, um, he has not gotten back to me, so when he does, we have some accounts that.
All right.
And if accounts, if, if they're way over, that we could set up a payment plan, that would be up to the board if we wanna do that.
Okay, number three, at thirteen grand.
Now, this one will be me, um, I actually have my copy of it down at the plant, I took it down to rescan it, but. Um, what I applied for this year was, uh, like previously discussed, uh, in meetings some time ago. Getting a hardwired communication line from the plant to the well, uh, in the summertime, we, even now, it's been acting up, um. We get communication loss for the well, and summer times will be, we need the well, so, with the leaves on the trees and stuff, so when I go hit the button, turn it on, it doesn't work, so. Uh, it's, it's not reliable, you'll see it turn on, off, on, off, so this eliminates it, um, it should've been how it was in the first place, but. You'll learn, I guess, so, um, uh, so it was, I reached out to Carlson Technologies, they're a local company that runs fiber. Um, they can run the fiber, I believe it was like forty-five hundred dollars, um, I asked. For the county for that entire amount for the materials, um, their only labor would be splicing the line. Or if we need help running the line, um, I said we would try to run it, God forbid we would need them, they quoted us, I think fifteen hundred dollars, so. Um, I, I mean, it's up to the county if they award that to us, um, I just wanted to say, either way, that's been something for a while. Would be worthwhile getting, um, if for some reason the county doesn't award that, um, I'll probably consulting the board, see their thoughts on. Getting that upgrade as well, but.
They say there's a line already there, but.
There, there's, there's, there's conduit there, there's empty conduit, but, but the line is not there, correct?
They never ran a line into the well.
You're looking for files.
Fiber optic, yeah, yeah, so, and then that go, that would also give us the ability to put a computer up there.
Yeah.
Um, I can start the, the well when I'm physically at the well, rather than go up, check the well, come back.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Okay, so we need to talk about that.
Yeah, well, yeah, pending, pending what their decision is.
How long does it take them to get back to, back to grants?
I think we know by the end of March.
All right, wonderful, okay, number four, meters.
That's me also, I'm on a roll tonight, asking the boards for Monday, um, so we have. Uh, most of the entire system from the Bernga, or from the Gardner Hill tank down through Scattertown and Bomber Town completed. Um, there are a few meters in Scattertown to finish, um, and all but one in Bomber Town to do. Um, so we're looking at twenty-three meters needed to complete that section of the system, um, I think we're okay on M X U's. Um, so, meters are in cases of, there's eight per case. So I rounded it up, three cases, which gives us twenty-four meters, uh, three thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. So, if we don't, I mean, if we don't do that, it's not the end of the world, but. The meters, I mean, we've been talking about this for a while, other meters, uh, the meters are twenty-seven years old, they lose their accuracy, you lose revenue, and you lose accuracy.
Yeah.
So, to complete that section, that's what we need, so.
Okay.
That's the key amount.
So, uh, can we, can we make a motion and vote on it right now?
I think so.
All right.
I know the money lady's mad at me, but. You gotta spend money to keep your revenue.
How much is it?
Uh, three thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Three ninety-nine what, Patrick?
Three thousand nine hundred sixty-three and sixty-eight cents.
How many meters you need, yeah?
That covers twenty-four meters.
And that's for what area?
Uh, Bomber Town, to complete Scattertown and do Bomber Town. And then, so, when we're reading meters, we'll, we can turn the radio on, and from Gardner Hill Tank down, beep, 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 all, all radio.
So, we, we, we need a motion to, uh.
Purchase?
Fun, yeah.
Twenty-four meters.
Purchase twenty-four meters for the sum of thirty-nine hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents?
Yep.
Correct?
That's all.
Okay, so, um, should I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, I'll second that motion, all in favor?
I.
I gotta think about that one.
Okay, all opposed, okay, motion here.
Oh, wait a minute, is he opposing?
Yeah, I, I gotta think about that, that's thirty-nine hundred dollars for twenty-some meters.
Yeah, and I got, I got word from L B that that is the current, the current price for those, so.
And all the other meters are working okay, I mean.
The twenty-four are not working?
Not working, or?
Well, like you said.
No, well, the, the ones, those are the, um, those are the meters in that area that have not been changed yet.
Okay.
And they're around the age of.
Twenty years.
Twenty-plus years old, they are, I probably, and I'm not gonna say with confidence that those meters are accurate, because they're probably not. So.
So, so you get new, new, new meters, or lose your revenue, whatever you wanna do, Gus, it's up to you, Gus, thirty-nine hundred dollars.
I mean, if they're working.
They're working, but they're not, and, and, well, some, we did replace a lot, that were, we get at least six that were jammed up completely. There might be some zero reads there, slow reading, um, I don't know, I mean, we still have a, we have about three zero and.
Yeah, I just need to know what he's voting on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I used to get thirty-nine hundred dollars.
It is, it is a lot.
At some point, it's gonna have to come.
And these are the new remote control ones?
Yes, yeah, we already have the radios.
Now, how far can you read with them?
I've seen, I've seen up to two miles, actually.
You can read up to two miles?
Yeah, in our system, they typically start coming in at Valley Farm, they have to be pretty close, um, just because of our geography, um.
Now, how many in the system do we have, where are we at with that? I mean, far as the readers that we don't have to walk around and read anymore, I mean, it's, it's been an argument for twenty years.
Yeah, there's, there's at least a hundred twenty-five of them, right now, that are already converted to radio, brand new meters.
You already started to read them without walking?
Yes, yep, yep, you still have to drive through, um.
It saves time.
It does, it does, once, if, in the grand scheme of things, I hope to see the whole entire system be radio read, you can read your readers in a day. I mean, it, that's it, it, it's quick, when I demoed them in Saint Mary's, there was a plant on one side of the hill, we were on a side street, um. Two miles away on the other side of the hill, they're ding, 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 it was.
I'll tell you what, I, I don't have no problem with this, but we're not gonna give these reads out, spending that kind of money to go out, your reader reads. And, uh, I don't wanna argue with the sorages, but we can't afford to give them out.
Right, and there's, I, it, that's something we can discuss with them.
I mean, that, that, that would outpay us the upkeep of this, and there's an agreement for them to pay for their reads.
That's something to discuss with them, if we, if we do.
Have to discuss.
Yeah, if we do fully convert.
Spending this money without trying to recover some of this money, it was, we're just giving your reads out, because nobody wanted to, and I can see what the issue. Nobody wanted to read them reads when I was in the water, or in the sorage authority before, it was always a battle. And, I mean, maybe this is a good road we're going down, but we can't keep making. Life easier by spending money and not receiving nothing from the other end.
I mean, we're.
But then also, we're not getting good reads, so we're not charging people enough for their volume.
Yeah, primarily.
Six of one, half a dozen of the other.
Yeah.
I just want you to understand.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I will vote for it, but I do wanna see us getting something back, because it's costing us money.
To put them in, yeah.
To put these in, and, and, you know, I don't know how long they've been doing this, now, for months.
Primarily, we are, we're making sure we're bill, we're billing properly, but they will also benefit from it, so.
Sure, yeah.
I would say worst case, and there, there is like a fifteen hundred dollar census fee every year, say worst case, we're not walking by foot. Or in, in the long run, we're not on foot reading meters, but we're doing drive-bys, we're still maintaining that, we're still doing all of that. Maybe it's something to propose to them, hey, pay half the support, or something.
Yes, and I think, I think we, we have to definitely bring that up, I will vote for it, but I do wanna bring that up, that they're, they're gonna have to pay that half. You know what I mean, that, the, the agreement that we have, because we can't give that out to give them good readings.
There has to be some common ground as far as a meter.
There has to be, because, and I can see it.
Sit down and talk, right?
It's, it's, that's what we have to sit down and discuss.
Get that on our list, sharing what we wanna talk to them about.
Yeah, because if they do, I'm gonna go to the meeting and ask them, there's, there's more issues than what we think.
That's really the only conflict we have with them, is that meter reading, so, so, we nip that in the bud, I think we're.
Yeah, and we're good, but all I'm saying, and there we are, another thirty-nine hundred bucks, and I know, cause I read the meters, and I walked that road and, and read them meters.
Yep.
And, and I know what you're up against.
Yep.
But you have to answer why you're spending thirty-nine hundred bucks, you're making life easier.
Making life easier, and we're metering proper.
You know what I mean, we still gotta, we gotta get some of our money back.
Okay, so what's going on?
We're gonna vote on it.
All right, well, I think, I guess, we.
Well, was everybody?
The three of us voted aye, so yours would be an aye then, I guess, right?
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to get that point.
Okay, number five, meetings.
This is the big one.
Yeah, big one, it's, it's.
I said we got the building back here, we can set it out, we could probably put ten people back here, we gotta measure it six feet apart, we have to open up. Uh, I know Jimmy, you're well against it in a way, but, uh.
Well, I mean, it is what, everybody, everybody thinks this is all over.
No.
But it's not, right?
It's not over.
And, and my, and, and I, and I'll say this, my theory is, you know, you go home, you watch the news every night. And, uh, you know, how many cases are here and here, I mean, here's L County, until all the counties touching us are zero.
Yeah.
And, and like I said, and I've said this at past meetings, I, I was, you know, even Deb, I think, you know, we're. Kinda shooting for opening up for like the first week in June, I know all the people in Jeremy Riffey and everybody else, they don't wanna, you know, they, they want us to open. You know, but I honestly think Jeremy's jumping the gun, and, and I understand, you told the attorney, and, you know, we have to this.
I said they're gonna be getting, if we, if we would've stayed open, and we would've been the authority to get everyone sick, they're gonna hang us.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I'm, I'm indifferent, we do have a big space out there, um.
I can say it doesn't matter to me, but, because it does.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
It does and it doesn't, like, you, you don't know what to predict, you truly don't.
The attorney gave us two options, either open up or zoom, so, I'm, I'm, I'm for zoom, so, I mean, I don't know how everybody else is.
It's not difficult.
Yeah, and, and I mean.
The tough part would be, I mean, I'll probably switch places with Brian, I'll work the computer, it's gonna be tough to get everybody in the same shot.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out, even if we gotta do it out there.
But if you can still hear them, you know, if we all are not in the same shot.
You don't have to have a camera on for zoom, you can just do it audio.
Yeah.
I mean.
We can try, we can try it out, I mean, we've been.
Was, was, was the township zooming?
No.
Okay.
They were open, right?
That was another thing that frustrated me, I, I guess we can get into, we, we posted the audio, we posted our minute, we posted everything online. We were great, we were the only ones doing that, but now we're the short end of the stick, not doing it, like, give us a chance to figure something out here, so. We had the recommendation from, from the attorney, either zoom or open.
So why don't we try zoom, and if zoom doesn't work, then we should go to the.
Well, it ain't gonna matter, I mean, it should be the one to complain, but, and nobody gonna die either, or, or catch anything.
And it'll still be on.
Zoom is safer.
Yeah, it'll be on new business.
Yeah, and the thing about it, I'm all for shooting for that first week in June, and open up, let it get warm, let this virus get knocked on its ass. A little bit, you know?
More people vaccinated.
Yeah, Tom Wolf wants to open up the whole world, but, you know, cause, cause, what, twenty million got vaccinated? Out of three hundred and fifty million, you, you know?
I think it's, if, if the government, Pennsylvania government, government ends up opening, if the state of emergency is lifted, it'll be inevitable, we'll have to go open, but.
Yeah.
We can play by here month to month, I know we discussed zoom in the past, now I'll have to do it.
And I remember you were saying, no big deal.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, just have a meeting, right?
Yeah, you just have a meeting.
Everybody can answer, ask questions.
The day of the meeting, you post the, um, listen link out, people join if they wanna join, and we'll be able to see them, or not see them. They can, you know, join without being seen, they can, you know, just have their name up there, and we, you know, if we can't all be in the screen, we can all be here.
Absolutely, yeah.
So.
I just think it'd be safer.
And it is safer, I mean, we use it all the time, and it's a safe process.
I can't totally speak for Deb, but just going off of our past discussions with her.
I guarantee she ain't.
I think she's gonna.
She ain't gonna wanna open up. And like I said, it's, it's what's, it's what's safe for the community, it ain't, it ain't what, it, it ain't what Jay Township. And the sorority's doing, I mean, they're, they have entitled, do whatever they wanna do, but they're just jumping on the bandwagon with the rest of the state.
Yeah.
So. I think, I think it'd just be better to say, I mean, holy cow, it's gonna, it's gonna be April's meeting, or, um, I'm sorry, yeah. April, May, but holy cow, it's a couple of months away, I mean, holy cow, that ain't gonna kill everybody.
Do we have all the equipment to do this?
Yeah.
Yeah, you just have to download it onto your computer.
Yeah, I'll read.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, he can, yeah.
Do this.
Yeah.
We got my, the new operator laptop down there, I'll just charge it up, prop it right there.
Yeah. I just feel that that'd be better for now, I mean, they're gonna complain, they complain anyway, don't matter, so, I mean, why not just keep everybody safe? Then we'll open up June first. Then we'll open up June first, or June third, I think, like I said, is June third that first Thursday of June? Pretty sure it is.
It'll be on old business, we can discuss.
It's only.
And keep it there, we'll play it, why don't we try Zoom for the next month?
For the next meeting, and if it doesn't work for us, we can talk about it.
I'll just have to advertise that we're Zooming, and, and whatever we do, I'll just have to keep advertising.
What you'll have to put in is like, the link will be available on the Jay Township website, the Water Authority website, the day of the meeting, so then they'll be able to, to link onto that and then join the meeting.
Quick thing about links, there was discussion about posting in newspapers, Bob and I think Christine were asking about getting notifications directly to them. There's a thing online called MillChimp, I'll try to set that up too, that way. Because I was just gonna say, boy, we're spending a lot on postage, or on advertising. We can set that up for them, anyone else that wants to get on it, here's a notification from the Water Authority. But I'm gonna stray away from that, from our emergency announcements, I have Swift Reach for that, but I could use it for that as well. But I don't want the customers to rely on that, 'cause we already have a system in place. But we can give that to them on that too, so.
I need a motion about the meetings.
All right, I make a motion that we, that we try Zooming for the next meeting, and if it goes well, I, I, I would like to open up on June third, Thursday, June third, to have our meetings open to the public again here at our facility. So, can I have, can I have a motion?
I guess you may have a motion.
I made a motion, I have a second.
I would say, we're gonna do this, let's do it, and just say we're going to open the meeting in June.
Yeah.
Let's vote on it to do it to June.
We will Zoom?
We will Zoom till June.
Till June, and then open.
As long as the stuff stays away and gets better.
Yeah.
June, we will open, that way she don't have to keep putting it in the paper, keep spending money.
And the thing about it, maybe within the next two, three months, more people could get vaccinated, you know? I mean, time is not gonna hurt anything.
There's no sense of keep putting it in the paper for two months down the road.
Yeah.
Let's just do it for the next two months and say June, that's it.
Will be our open meeting.
And we're having it here at the garage.
That's it, yeah.
That way we don't have to advertise this, it's gonna be advertised right now.
There you go.
Is that a second from you?
That'd be a second for me.
There we go.
That way you advertise one time, and everybody knows,
Done deal.
Done deal, what we were trying to do.
You wanna advertise in the Daily Press on the Courier?
Yep.
I would do both.
Yep, put them in both.
So everybody understands the Zoom thing, I hope it goes well, 'cause I don't know nothing about it. So, I'm gonna let you guys hell.
It's scary at first, but it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I've done it.
But we have to, we have to do something. Now, I'm all for going in the garage here and having a meeting.
Yeah.
But, but the idea is, let's not just keep putting this in the paper and playing off.
Yeah.
It is only two months, first, the first meeting in June, we're going out in the garage.
That's it.
So make sure you put in there that we will be here at the Water Authority.
I think that also will help Sharon too, because she doesn't have to drag everything out.
Well, yes, she don't have to keep putting it in the paper.
And if she doesn't have something, we don't have it at the Township building.
I don't mind having it here, that's no, and I think we could get ten people out here, I would imagine.
At least, yeah.
Oh, my God, yeah.
You know, it's nice summer, we can open up the door and get some air.
Heck, yeah.
And they can stand outside if they want.
Yeah, it's fine too.
All righty, okay, so can I, okay, we had the second from Gus. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye, all opposed? Okay, motion here. Okay. Appointment of second vice chairman.
So what we ran into last week with the meeting was, both the chairman and vice chairman were unable to preside over the meeting. And I said the chairman, I know how to run a meeting, I'm sure Fran and Lisa, we, we could've both done it, but Sharon made a good point to me. You elect the vice chair and the chair to run the meeting, we didn't elect anyone else under them. So I asked her to put this on new business, just in the event, yes, we would've, we had three people available, we would've had a quorum, but nobody appointed to, to run the, the meeting, so. Unlikely it'll happen again, possibly could, I think it'd be a good idea to have a second vice chair. I would have no problem doing that, but I'm gonna say we need to ask for another volunteer, because the status of me being on the board is a month-to-month thing at this point. My application is, and we know that, but they keep telling me, so I get the impression they're not gonna put me on, so. Fran or Lisa, if you, either you're willing to be second vice chair. If either of you wanted, I guess we don't do it, but it's.
You want a Fran?
If you want, go ahead.
Oh, I don't want it.
I, I mean, I don't care, if it comes down to like last weekend, I need to run a store.
Yeah, I mean, it isn't like it's, it's that often that both of us run a time, you know?
All you're doing is running the meeting, that's what the chairperson.
There you go. Okay, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Fran as second vice chair.
I'll second it.
Wonderful, all in favor? Okay, and all opposed? Motion here.
And no, Fran, it stays.
One more question before we Zoom, I always ask, the well, did you go out and get some prices, some ideas?
Yeah, like I said, we're still waiting on a couple prices, trying to, we got a couple ballparks for a softener system, I think a reverse, or not a reverse, I'll do this, a membrane system is gonna be a little bit pricey, but we're still gonna get a quote on it. Like I mentioned before though, I mean, either of those are gonna require backwashing, so we're either gonna be looking at putting some kind of line down to the water plant to discharge the sewer, or bringing the water down to the water plant first, and then figuring out some way to either pump it through our rob pumps already, or vice versa. Like I said, we, I do wanna look into pretty much a passive mixing system in the tank, I think that will help. I think that'll be our quickest, cheapest option right now. Free to tell the DDP about what our requirements are gonna be if we do wanna get in that tank. And I also want to, we are putting it in a couple other tanks already. I'd like to see them kinda act as the guinea pigs and see exactly how it's gonna work. I mean, we did witness a slight clarity difference today after running the well for roughly fifteen thousand gallons, compared to last, last week when we were here, it was just stream water, tank looked crystal clear. After running the well for a while, you could see a clarity difference. Which is aeration. Yes, and that's what I'm thinking, a, a different inlet system compared to what we have now that'll provide better mixing in the tank. I'm, I'm thinking that that'll take care of a good part of that. That's always a major complaint when we run the well, oh, my water looks like milk, it's cloudy. Fill a glass, let it sit, it goes away, so it's air, but does that mean, maybe it's still reacting, I don't know. The well, the wells. Well, and that's the thing, that, a mixing system isn't really going to take or decrease the hardness, decrease the iron or manganese, but it, it's hopefully gonna affect the aesthetics. It's gonna make it aesthetically more pleasing, you're not gonna have it where it looks like it's stirred up, it's aerated, coming out of the faucet. And I think if we can get to that point, I think that would be a big step. 'Cause I think, anything else is gonna be, an actual treatment system is going to be a year out ballpark to lock, stock and barrel, two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars.
And that's what we got to look at.
Yes. Personally, something five to ten. Yes, yeah, and just parts on, parts on a mixing system, got a ballpark price, we'd be looking at like six thousand dollars material.
And we could try that for a year and see what happens.
Yeah.
You know, see how, when we get into working it hard.
It's not gonna hurt anything, that's for sure. If nothing else, even with the stream sources, I think it'd be a lot better to, it's always better to get more mixing in your tanks. I know I just gave Sharon another heart attack throwing out a thousand dollars, but.
All right, see what you can come up with, and we'll work on it, that's wonderful, see what we can do.
All righty, so we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion here.